Let's begin. To the flag, in the United States, the burning.
To the republic for which we stand. One nation, under God.
Indivisible, everlasting.
Please remain with me. Father, we thank you for this day. We ask that you would be with us as we make decisions for our citizens of this town. That you would give us level heads and agreement. And we pass this in the name of Jesus. First item on the agenda. Can y'all hear me?
Right now.
The first item on the agenda. I'm not even on this.
You're turned all the way up.
Ready, all?
This is the first item.
Testing one, two, one, two.
Okay. Oh, man. The first item on the agenda is to approve the agenda. Does anybody have? Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Brown seconded. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed? The next item is the approval of the minutes, the regular town council meetings of September the eighteenth. Councilman Jernigan made the motion. Councilman McGowan seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. All those that don't accept us? No? Okay. Let's see. It's time for our first open forum. If anyone has anything to bring before council. Please come forward and state your name, your address. No one wishing to come forward. I'm going to close the first open forum. I have a proclamation that I need to read. It's recognized in November the first, twenty twenty-three, as National Family Literacy Day in the town of Wilsons Mills. Whereas National Family Literacy Day, established by the hundred and third Congress in nineteen ninety-four, and now making its twenty-ninth anniversary on November the first, twenty twenty-three, highlights the importance of reading and learning for the entire family and emphasizes the impact that parents have on their children's learning. And whereas this day is celebrated across America each year and focuses on special activities and events that showcase the importance of family literacy programs that empower families and build a nation of readers. And whereas literacy programs across the United States will observe National Family Literacy Day by holding read-a-thons, book drives, workshops, and family activities at schools, libraries, and community centers to encourage literacy. And whereas as many as one in six adults struggle with reading and writing, and by learning to read, individuals can gain self-respect and confidence and strive toward goals that otherwise would not be achievable. And whereas the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is a nonprofit, non-political, volunteer-woman service organization dedicated to promote patriotism, preserve American history, and secure Americans' future through better education for children and adults. And whereas education being one of the cornerstones of the National Society of the Daughters of the American Revolution is committed to increase literacy by promoting and supporting literacy programs. Now therefore, I, Leader Byrd, Mayor of the town of Wilsons Mills, do hereby proclaim November the first, twenty twenty-three, as National Family Literacy Day. To underscore the importance of literacy, celebrate the joy of reading, encourage residents to promote literacy by reading together as a family, and to extend deep appreciation to our local librarians, educators, and literacy service providers for their tireless effort to strengthen the literacy of our children and our community. And I know for a fact, as a grandmother, that it's very important to read with children. My grandchildren, I've got one that we used to read, he would read the book, bring it home and say, Grandmama, read it. And then I would read it and we would talk about it. And how important it is to get children to read. They can't learn if they can't read. I have had a, September for me as mayor was one of the most trying months that I have ever had. I had about fourteen meetings that were not related to this council, but meetings that I had to go to as mayor to represent this town. I learned a lot. I went some on with Leanna, some on with Wendy. But I feel like that we need, I need to be there. Our staff needs to be there when needed so that people will know who we are and that Wilsons Mills is important. And so if anyone has a meeting that they would like for me to attend to represent the town, I'm willing to go. And learn everything I can to represent this town and learn what we need to grow. So I'm just telling you that it was trying for me, but I enjoyed it. I learned a lot. Leanna and I have a lot, we're going on right now. There's a lot of stuff going on behind the scenes that y'all don't know about because we can't tell you yet. But there's a lot of stuff that's, that's out there. And there's a lot of things that we're doing. And I think it's for the betterment of the town. And that's all I have, Leanna. It's your turn.
This is a timetable for the comprehensive utilities plan that was awarded to TRC Incorporated, engineering firm. And we've got a meeting scheduled for Wednesday, November first, to review some of the data that's now being uploaded into a shared drive between us and the county. And even a representative from the Wooton Company is sending in some information about the work that was done back in twenty seventeen. So this timetable shows what will be done. If you look at the contract, the various tasks in the contract and what dates those will be completed and we'll be holding meetings throughout the next several months, including into twenty twenty-four. And if everything goes as planned, which I don't see any reason why it shouldn't, this should come to you for a final presentation at the August council meeting in twenty twenty-four. Anybody have any questions about this? Just wanted you to have a copy of it for your reference.
Leanna, are they having any problems getting the information from the county and?
No.
And then it?
No. The two representatives of the county, Shandra Farmer and Kim Renear, are on the shared drive with us. And so everybody's putting in all of the data. And then, once we meet on that in November, we'll move forward from there. The second thing that I wanted to talk to you about, I mentioned it last month. The Triangle East Chamber of Commerce, the subcommittee that I'm on for economic development, has hired livability for promoting areas in the county. And as I mentioned to you, they were supposed to be getting me some information on costs for ads. We're hoping that if we can go ahead and set with them what ad we want to do, that by the time we start the branding and logo project, that will be completed before this is publicized in the spring of twenty-four. So most of these are going to range in, in the area that's under my threshold. So I'm probably just going to work with, this is a lot of information that they sent to me. I didn't think that you wanted copies of all of this information, but it just gives some examples of other towns and how they market themselves, especially if there aren't a lot of businesses in the towns yet, which is our case. But we do have a couple of developers that we're working with that will probably put some stuff in this livability publication about the developments that are going up, especially the mixed-use ones, to try to market some of the areas for retail and commercial. And then, of course, we'll have our information in there about our demographic, population, what's coming, transportation, all that kind of stuff. So I just wanted to update you on that again. I did get that from her. Now, there's some of them that go, the premium rates or several pages go all the way up to tens of thousands. But we're not looking at anything like that right now. Right now, we just want to make sure we get our name out there, hopefully after our branding. So I just wanted to update you on that, too. The community engagement projects that we've talked about before with with the department heads and all of the staff, when we had our meeting, we did meet a few weeks ago and assigned teams for the five top short-term goals. And this is just a summary of those meetings. And I wanted you to each have a copy of that. This basically just talks about what we went over, what we felt like we wanted to accomplish with this community engagement project. Talking about why change may or may not be hard, especially in the public sector. And giving priority to some of our brainstorming ideas. Our top priority short-term goals between now and the end of the year deal with volunteers for different events and in the community and surrounding areas. Direct mailing permits in hopes to get more information out to the citizens. Utilizing our YouTube and social media, which unfortunately tonight, we're having technical difficulties again. Digitizing the packets so that not only cut down on paper, but also it's available for the public on the website and when we get our new chambers, to be able to put it up on the screen so that the public can see that. And working with area HOAs, school-sponsored activities, the PTA, and other informational meetings around town with different organizations that give us an opportunity to answer any questions that citizens may have about what we do and what we're trying to do in the community to get everybody engaged, you know, positively. So this is just a summary of that. Our teams were created. We meet again tomorrow to talk about what the teams have accomplished so far on each one of these subjects. And we've got a department head on each one of the five teams. And then other staff members with that department head who are heading up these different projects. So I'll keep you updated on these, but if you get to looking through this over the next week or so, give me a call if you've got any questions. And we're excited about a lot of the stuff that we're getting ready to start doing. The chambers update, request for qualifications has been sent out. The due date is November third. And we are still on schedule for y'all to review that at your November twentieth meeting and award that hopefully to somebody. So that we can get that moving.
And that's going to be the deadline is November the third?
November third is the deadline for submission. And then we will do staff interviews after we review those and present them to council for award on the twentieth. And that's all I have. Anyone have questions without anything else?
You put this together good with this stuff that you just gave us on the staffing that?
Thank you, but Star did a lot of that. She helped me with a lot of that.
That looks good. It is incredible. Thank you for that. Anyone have any questions for Leanna? Sheri is not here.
I will be happy to answer any questions that I can. She is not, she's under the weather tonight.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions on the financial statement? I didn't see anything that stood out to me. I have one question. You might, and I think you can answer this. The money that we had from, that was awarded that we were trying to use up, has, have we, have y'all decided exactly how that's going to be used? That, what's it called?
Sure which money, are you talking about the ARPA funds?
Yeah, the ARPA, that, I couldn't think of the name of it.
So our ARPA funds are being used for revenue, for revenue replacement. So that, if you look on the first page, under revenue, there's an amount.
That's not very different.
I'm sorry, not, not under revenue. It's under.
Page one.
I feel like I gave it to you last.
Okay, it is on page one.
There it is, on the first page, yeah. Page one, ARPA.
I just overlooked it, Leanna, I see that.
And those are, those are, I'm sorry.
I think I was looking in the wrong place.
Earmarked for the different projects that we have this year. The excess on utilities, the branding, the capital improvement project, staffing plan. All of those things are the things.
I thought we had already put that out, okay. That's what I want to be sure of, but I could find.
I think if you looked in your information from last month's meeting, I gave a summary of, it was last month or month before, whenever you awarded the TRC contract, because it showed all of the projects that you earmarked for that ARPA money this year.
Leanna, have we heard any more from Representative Strickland's office?
We did hear that as soon as they can get past all of the red tape with the governor and whatever else is going on with the Speaker of the House, that they will, that, that we've got everything that, that we request that should go through. So once approved, everything should go through. But, so there's not an issue on our end. It's just an issue in trying to get everything approved. And that may have happened Friday or today. I honestly haven't had a chance to watch it.
I don't, I don't know.
But we, we've got what we asked for.
That last thing you did?
We did get what we need. For the.
For them to give it to us.
For the budget to be approved and them to.
Okay, so it's in, it's in that budget, but the, but the committee?
It may have been approved. Did anybody, did anybody see that over the last week or so? Or tomorrow? Okay, thank you.
Okay, so you're saying the committees have approved it's gone through the House and the Senate?
That's correct.
And just wait, okay, cool.
That's correct. It's on, it's in the budget.
And that'll take care of that one line item that we had to borrow for.
It should take care of that and funding for a new police department at our campus.
Oh, really?
And we, we hope that that amount will cover it. If not, it will pretty much, it will be a big chunk of it.
So we, we asked, we asked big when we.
I guess, does that excite the chief or does the chief happen to really like where he is? Really? Okay, cool, alright.
Any other questions about the finance report?
Oh, thank you. Okay, Wendy? Planning department?
Are there any questions about the monthly reports that you have in front of you? Not a whole lot of change from last month to this month on that.
I see that on the cottages that the developer is now contracting out items. Obviously, he has to contract them out. And I see the one home that was just, the backyard was eroding out onto the street and clogging up the sewer, has finally gotten sod there. I don't know who put that there, but it stopped that erosion, which is very nice. So my remaining question with respect to that development is the retention pond.
He has more than just the fencing to do on that. And he's supposed to be getting all of that stuff together.
Okay, when I say fencing, I mean obviously for the retention ponds, you know, for the safety side of it. But I want to bring up the other part that he promised to do in, in, instead of a vegetation barrier, he's changed it for you to a six-foot white plastic privacy fence. When is that going to go through? I have neighbors asking me about it.
He was supposed to have already been working on trying to get that contracted out. I know from another project going on in town that there is a weight on that fencing. Some of it is backordered, I guess, depending on who you go through.
So it's not the contractor, it's waiting, it's the, the product?
That's my understanding. That's my understanding.
Has he selected a contractor yet? Has he selected a contractor?
He told me he has.
When did he say that?
Two weeks ago.
Okay, nice. Did he tell you who it was?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else have questions for Wendy? We have an action in front of us that needs to, we need to call for a public hearing.
Before we call for it, could you, could you fill me in?
Yeah, she is.
On fifty-eight, twenty-seven, where that is? Is that the one we were talking about last time?
No, this is a different one. This one is directly across from D and J Cycle, on the opposite side of seventy. It's approximately nineteen point nine eight acres. And the owner is requesting to go from agriculture to commercial. And it would be a general rezone, which means anything that is allowed in the C seventy district would be allowed there if it is approved. We must have a public hearing called for and held before the town council can vote on the action. So tonight, I'm just asking for you to call for a public hearing on the potential rezone of fifty-eight, twenty-seven, US Highway seventy Clayton, North Carolina, nineteen point nine eight acres from AG to C seventy at the November twentieth, twenty twenty-three town council meeting.
I make a motion, we call for a public hearing on the potential rezone of fifty-eight, twenty-seven, US Highway seventy Clayton, North Carolina, being nineteen point nine eight acres from AG to C seventy at the November twenty-third, November twentieth, twenty twenty-three, ten, council meeting.
Councilman McGowan made the motion. Councilman Jernigan seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Public hearing will be called. Tim? Events report.
So on October seventh, we had our touch-a-truck event, which was a huge success. I have to give all the credit to Star on that. She really made some phone calls, hit the ground running. And we also had a farmer's market that day, so, and we had a pretty big crowd. We had Duke Life light out, so the helicopter really brought a lot of attention in. Our last farmer's market is going to be this Saturday, the twenty-first. And we are already planning our Christmas event. We're going to do Chatsworth True Lane again this year. And we are also going to have vendors at that event. That's going to be December first. So more information on that to come. And we are having a trunk-or-treat event on the twenty-eighth of this month at the Family Dollar with the mayor's church. We're teaming up with them.
And we had a yard sale.
And we had a yard sale on the thirtieth of September, which was a huge success, too.
Very huge.
Yeah. We're hoping to do that again in the spring.
Just like the staff, I was, and the mayor, I was there also at the touch-a-truck thing. It was a great success. So on behalf of all of us at the council, thanks Star for her hard work.
Sure will.
She was so pleased, she was crying.
She was crying.
She was, she was great. So thank her again.
I will, I'll pass that one to her. At the Family Dollar. The twenty-eighth.
Anyone have any question? The, the events that we've had have been very successful. And I am very, very thankful for your support and for Stars for putting it together, because they have really been good. The touch-a-truck was just awesome. Y'all just don't know, there's, those little, it was so funny, and I've got to tell this because it was funny to me. It rained, and it would stop, and it would rain, and it would stop. And you'd see all these families, the children and the parents at the trucks. And it'd start raining and they all run to the shelters. And then it would stop raining and they'd go all running back to the trucks. And then it would start raining and they'd be running back to. But those young ones went right back to the truck, they got out of. It was, it was so funny. They were just wanting to touch everything.
Yeah, and the food vendor was great, too, because when I asked for a hot dog, they said red or brown. No, I got brown, of course.
He doesn't eat red hot dogs. Thank you very much, Emily. Chief? What do we need to know?
You have your September report in front of you. Any questions? It's now on your agenda. I wanted to introduce my newest full-time officer, but he's out on a call right now. His name is Alejandro Almason. He's twenty-two years old, working his associate's degree. A very eager young man, just finished BLAT, so he has no law enforcement experience. He's our first bilingual officer. His family is from Mexico and rich tradition of law enforcement in his family in Mexico. And he is first-generation law enforcement here in New Orleans.
Did you say first, a full-time hire?
Full-time.
Great, great.
Yeah, we had an opening.
Okay, great, thank you.
Chief, is that the one I met? The one that was just sworn in? Sorry, no.
No, he's been sworn, he's been part-time.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, I, I personally like the two-hundred-and-eighty car stops. And, and I think it's, is that showing results with the car stops, coming up with intel, information, FDA, all kinds of warrants, anything?
It is. We had a DWI last, last night, I believe, or Saturday or Sunday night, one of them. I think it's helping in the traffic in the construction zone. People are still, you know, hightailing from that area. You've written a lot of tickets for the traffic in the construction.
I'm, I'm just excited to know that you have some hidden talent. When I read on this, your retreat notes here, I'm kind of excited to see your hidden talent. Where's that? It's on the back page.
Oh, oh, yeah.
His book. Yeah, we keep learning. I mean, that's what we're supposed to do in life, learn. And I mean, you know, we keep learning about our achievements.
You mean you haven't read his book yet?
Not yet.
See, we'll talk about it.
But I do want to sign it. Yeah, they pressed that one out on me.
I'm sorry, did you say we did that?
I didn't.
Okay, okay.
Right there.
Yeah, I would just, just as a quick aside, it doesn't even require a comment. When I'm, when I'm reading this the other day, the closest units for that, that backup or that request for assistance in Four Oaks was four Wilsons Mills officers. No state, no, no county deputies. It was four Wilsons Mills that were closer, not Smithfield. Well, I'm proud of you guys. Huh? Well, I know that, but still Benson, was it Benson? Yeah, Four Oaks. That's still a good ways away. Yeah.
When we respond like that, the other department really appreciates it. We appreciate it when they respond when we need them.
Have we ever had a re- Have we ever had a re- a response like that for, uh, a request for backup to go out that distance? Yeah. I mean, I'm sure we get county, but.
Yeah, something they'll check in or something like that on Selma, on the Oak Town.
Do they, do they have to be dispatched or do they just say, you know, I'll take that. I'll be, I'll get over there? Can, can you put it on the mic for everybody else? Mm-hmm.
If, if it's, it's detrimental, yeah, they'll, they'll check in anyway. I've, I've actually had a pine level officer come to Wilson's Mill a year ago to help an officer that was in fight, so he didn't have to be told.
I'm just, I'm just thankful that, that, that we had the foresight to see where our officers can go help other officers and we can, and our, our town is still covered. You know, that, 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 that means that, that, that we had the foresight some years ago during the planning. And, um, but, but thank y'all for what you.
I, I see the, I'm gonna, you know, I, I know, uh, Sergeant Ray is kind of busy, but I, I think this month or next month, I'm going to sit down and try and redo his calls for service and, and maybe give it to him and see if he can do it that way. What I was, what I would really like to see, and I think all of us would, instead of having to read and compare each time, to see, see a graph showing the, the trend instead of just reading it like this. And I know he's busy, so maybe I'll work on that and, and give it to him. Let's see if it, I, I, I can read that a lot better than I can read up and down and see, I can't see trends very well looking at numbers like that.
We'll take an analyst to give us.
Yeah, yeah, I know.
Did you guys have my report? Do you have any questions?
Have we, have we signed up with that company that's going to provide all those little nuts and bolts that you were talking about?
No, not yet. That's, uh, Mr. Dotter out of Goldsboro. I haven't called him yet.
Say again?
No, I haven't called him yet. We have, we have plenty of nuts and bolts right now for everything we're using.
Well, you know, I'm referring, I'm using nuts and bolts as just a sample and example, but.
Not yet.
Headlights and lug nuts, though.
We're not to that stage yet.
Okay. Um, what, what would you say, what, what stage are we at with respect to your capabilities on the maintenance side of town? Not, not mowing and things like that. I mean, tires, brakes, what? Give me a quick rundown like that.
Uh, some of the small stuff we do now.
Name, name those. That's what I'm looking for.
Me and Tony just done our oil changes on our trucks the other day.
Okay, oil changes.
We do some tires.
Do we keep the filters in stock?
Uh, I do have a couple extra in stock.
Okay.
Um, the tires, I do it for the PD a lot of times. I keep spare tires there on rims.
On rims? Can we, we have the capability to mount them yet?
No, not yet.
Are you looking to do that?
Yes, in the future, yes. Uh, but we take them back with blacks and I have them patched or replaced. And I just keep like, uh, I keep some in stock.
Okay.
I have some for the Tahoe, some for the newer chargers and then one for the older charger too.
Are we doing anything, belts? I mean, years ago, you needed to keep belts because they would break fairly often, but nowadays they've changed a little bit. So we don't have belts in stock.
Not there.
Okay. Um, all right. Oil changes, brakes? You said you've done a brake job?
We can do, we can do brakes, yes.
Okay.
I guess I'm also now we can start doing more stuff over there.
I, um, Patrick, uh, I had four tires fixed for the, what do you mean by fixed?
Um, if they have something in them, I take them over there to give them either patched or replaced with black.
I, I, and, and this is just my recommendation. Um, you know, looking back at, at Chief's report, um, if, if they got an emergency, I just don't like patching emergency tires. You know, I, I guess, I guess, and I'm not a mechanic even, but, you know, I mean, if you have to put a plug in it and they're going eighty miles per hour or whatever to, to respond to Four Oaks or, or to help another officer. I mean, I, I just want to make sure that it's the safest. If, if there's something in it, replace it. If it's not the safest to plug it, you know what I'm saying?
That's the reason why we patch them. We patch them from the inside. We don't put plugs from the outside. They take the tire off and then it's actually a, a pad glued into the inside of it. You know, I don't plug the tires on them, boy.
Sounds good. Thanks for sharing.
Can you say something else that's going to help me? Because I forgot what I was going to say and I need a second. Never, never mind. Um, oh, yes, I do. I'm sorry. It's, it's for Chief, real quick. Chief, is, are we getting to that point in the year where you're going to present to us, um, the vehicle report, the status report on all police vehicles? You know what I'm referring to, right?
Yeah, um, probably sometime around December.
Okay.
Where, uh, the batch of cars that we purchased about three years ago, they're starting to get updated, but, you know, there's still a service book, one or two. But it's starting to acknowledge and we're starting to see some of the, um, uh, the maintenance issues.
But everybody is aware of the report I'm talking about. It's the status and the, you know, you assign a number to, okay. And, and do we include, I don't know if you've included in that in the past, but our goal was at one point in time to start to include the, the town vehicles as well. Patrick's two vehicles, the, the other two that Wendy has are the town vehicles. Do we include those in that?
Yeah, I can get those.
Would you? Okay, cool. All right. I, I'd like to know where we are with respect to all of that. Okay, thank you. Thanks, Patrick.
Yes, I just wanted, I failed to mention this a while ago, but I wanted to let you all know and congratulate Emily for receiving her designation for certified municipal clerk past couple of weeks. Um, we are going to be administering her oath in November. And we're waiting until November because she'd like for her mom to be here and she wasn't able to come tonight.
Congratulations, Emily. A lot of hard work.
Let me try this. Oh, it already, it, yeah, yeah. Okay. It's, um, it's time for a second open forum. If anybody has any comments they'd like to make, please come forward. State your name, your address, and limit your comments to three minutes.
Jim Uzle, I live at one thirty-eight C Uzle Industrial Drive. Couple of months ago, I mentioned about the signage from DOT entering Wilson's Mills, starting with exit three oh nine. What kind of comments have we had back from DOT in getting Wilson's Mills included on all that signage all the way into town? Or is that not been done?
It will be done when DOT does it. I mean.
They won't do it unless you ask them.
Oh, you're talking about on Seventy Highway? They're going to be changing all those signage, so. They're going to be, they'll be putting it in, but.
Are we expecting to have DOT come back in here at any point in time soon? Remember when we were talking about, um, Councilman Brown's comments with respect to the timing of the lights? And we were going to talk to DOT about it and we did. Is it possible to bring this up?
Yeah.
Bring this up to DOT? That's a good point. I don't know if I've ever heard that.
You're talking about the signage.
Signs on Seventy for the new.
It will be, but it won't be done until Seventy I forty-two is completed and they change the signs because there'll be signs hanging down.
Right.
You know, before the bridge access. Yeah.
Do we need to remind them that we're here and we wanted that up there?
Well, see, Leanna is on Highway Seventy commission.
Okay.
Yeah, and so she's, she is up to date on when that's going to be done, so.
She's on the commission. It'll get some.
Yeah, she is.
Does that answer your question there, Jim?
She will be the one that will present it to them, so, I mean, I knew that.
There's, the, the DOT sign, the DOT signs that you're referring to will be put up by the DOT based on where the exits take people. During our branding and logo stuff, once that is complete, one of the things that we talked about for that is wayfinding signs. So there will also be signs like, um, the big blue signs that say Town Hall, Campus, or Community Park. Is that, is that part of what you were talking about as well? Yeah. That's DOT.
That's DOT.
Yeah, they're, they're probably not going to change it now because they're only about a year away from that being finished and everything will be based on what the service roads and the exits on and off there at Wilson Mills Road and Swift Creek Road will be.
Well, we're talking signage. What's the latest on, um, community park and the dog parks? Oh, dog park's not there, so signage doesn't matter yet, but with respect to the community park.
We don't have one yet.
Are we?
We're working on it, so.
Well, I, honestly, I'm trying to think about between now and June, if we're going to have money left over in that line with these plans that we're doing or if we're going to need to take it out of a different line. And we may just do that.
Take it out of what?
A different line in the budget. Because they are.
Still nice. I'd like to do that. Yeah, really nice.
Love to see it going up before the first of, of the year.
Yeah.
So that we're not waiting until next fiscal year.
Thank you.
Correct.
What's going on with the rugby club and the fields?
They are using them.
I, I actually went, um, went out there a couple of weeks ago when they were seeding and mowing and et cetera. And I, I sat and talked with, um, what's the guy's name who's in charge of rugby?
Ted.
Ted, yeah, I talked with him for quite a while. And he said they're, they're actually practicing on those fields with regularity.
They were out there, the whole back field the other Sunday was full. I mean, I went and the whole field was full.
Are you, Jim, are you answering? Can you hear?
I just got an update from him a week and a half ago, if you'd like coming and updating on everything.
Please.
Um, they have dropped all the seed and fertilizer and they have also completed some general maintenance around the fields. They are hoping to be playing actual games out there during the second half of their season. And they're also trying to fill that large washout area near the, what they call the championship field. So if you're facing, um, if you're standing at the shelter facing back the rest of the property, it's the one on the left. Um, the store, they're getting a storage shed out there for now because in March of twenty-four, we will be part of a, a Part F grant application that will hopefully have included in it an actual building with restrooms and office, storage building. Um, but for right now, they're just doing a small storage shed. And then once that's in place, they're going to put up some floodlights because they are starting to play later in the evening and of course it's getting dark. Um, the next big round of work that they're doing out there is going to be later in November. They're putting down more seed on the high traffic areas and then practice fields this fall so that the gold posts can be installed. But they've got to fix that grass up, unfortunately.
But they were, um, last Sunday afternoon, they, the whole back field was full.
They also have a good kids program going on right now.
I don't know, I don't know if it was children or adults because I, I just knew there was a lot of people on the back field back there.
As, as an indicator of their dedication to, to seeing this project through, he informed me that they have already in storage a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of stadium lights.
They do.
You don't, you don't do a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of stadium lights if it's going to be, yeah, maybe it'll work, maybe it won't.
We're hoping that that will be a big portion of our matching part of this Part F grant in the spring.
Will, will there be a, do you anticipate any problem between, uh, with those stadium lights and the, um, Crabtree family and maybe, and maybe the, uh, the homes?
I don't, I mean, I don't anticipate any problems because they're, they have to be installed a certain way and they, you know.
Okay, um, thank you.
I don't know what to handle. Yeah. Hey, anyone else? If not, I'm going to close the open forum.
Make a motion. We adjourn.
Councilman McGowan made the motion to adjourn. Councilman Jernigan seconded. All in favor? All opposed?